Okay, we'll move down to approve for suspended charges for period of amendment made starting first. Do you have a motion? Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, now we propose. I have a motion to approve for a council amendment for May 25th. Do you have a motion? Second? Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Question carries. Uh, Alex, he accused himself he wasn't here. Says as we heard, well, I ask is every citizen to raise your hand. Please come up to the podium so we can keep track of you with your name and address. If you're here for the outdoor signs or the parking, we will give you time to talk during that. So after there, we can kind of go back and forth. But if you want to come up and talk for the citizens we heard, we'll hear it. Just instead, you know, we don't want to, you know, not to make it redundant if we're going to talk during that, that time. For everybody who's there.
Should we wait or what?
Go ahead. Is there a question?
My name is Donna Condon, and I reside at 214 North Lake Drive in Downingtown Borough. I am a single mom, and I purchased my home two years ago on June 6th from my son Christopher and I. Christopher's 13 years old, severely autistic and non-verbal. One of the many reasons I purchased the home is it was in a nice, quiet residential neighborhood, but most of all, it had a beautiful fenced-in backyard which backs up to the woods. It was the perfect location for me to place my son's swing set and outdoor trampoline. Christopher loves to go out back, play in his court, on his swing set, and jump on the trampoline. It's a great way for him to release excess energy, and he had so much fun. However, I was completely call off guard when I drove home from work one night and saw what I described as a drive-in movie theater. It's extremely ugly to look at, and no one wants to see this from their home or backyard. Additionally, the billboard has created issues for my son to play in the backyard. Christopher has sensory issues due to his autism, and flickering objects are a challenge for him, and my son has difficulties processing such things, and he also sometimes will go into a trance, which is known as a stim. He does not enjoy going out back as much as he did, and this makes me very sad. I was driving eastbound on the 30 bypass, and I noticed the billboard does not distract any residents on the east side. Can you not come to a mutual agreement where you turn off the billboard on the west side and only use it on the east side? Can we put breed aside and truly think of your residents who reside in this development? The value of our homes will be decreased, which many of us cannot afford to happen. On the same topic of depriving my son to play in his backyard, I would like to bring up my great concern about the mayor and the borough's desire to build a road on the empty lot between my property and 302 North Lake Drive. I'm greatly concerned about the safety of our children and the residents in the neighborhood. By building this road, it will almost be like a freeway in our neighborhood for skating cars. I can tell you, many cars do not stop at the stop sign at the intersection of Farmhouse and North Lake Drive. In fact, in the last two years, there's already been an accident where a car ignored the stop sign, lost control, and crashed into the telephone pole located on my property. Pole was damaged, and that's a part, and part of my tree, and ultimately, due to a safety concern, the telephone pole had to be replaced. I can only imagine how fast people will drive down Farmhouse, flying through the neighborhood, onto this road, and through the potential new development which may be built behind my property. I would not be able to have my son out back due to safety concerns that should he get out of my backyard, and a car goes speeding down the road, I can't begin to fathom what would happen to him or any of the other beautiful children that reside on my street and cul-de-sac and love to play outside. And the value of our homes, no one will want to buy a home with a road next to it or a flashing screen. In closing, please put yourselves in our situation. How would you feel if you had a massive screen flashing in your home day and night? How would you feel if someone wanted to build a road between your property and your neighbor's property, risking the livelihood and safety of the residents in your neighborhood?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up at this time? Show your hands. All right, thank you very much. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have a third time to say I'm on that.
I have two questions to ask. Georgie and Alan, 149 Slatter Alley.
Thank you.
The last time I was asking about the pedestrian, I don't think anything happens to that. I'd like to know.
This one?
The pedestrian, the crosswalk on the, sorry, on the parking lot.
I have a call ended up.
I thought they approved that about five years ago.
I don't think, we never got a formal approval. They said they would support it, um, but it's right on that curve, so I wanted to just clarify if we had to move it from where to the other.
So that, before we start, the thing is straight line between the pocket park and the parking lot.
It's not a delay. He's going to check the state, and then go get back.
The other thing is, the second, I asked about the question about the allergy on the left. I mean, that's, it's getting worse and worse. We're worrying about weeds on the sidewalks, and the allergy, it looks, I mean, look like a swamp. I mean, it's just, it's embarrassing. The third thing is, last weekend, we have a, the arts festival. That's a good thing to bring to town, but anybody thought about the thought of the party? They took the whole parking lot with the tents. Then all the people worked on it, took all the parking spaces along the Route 30. Now, why do people want to come into park? They want to park for them. To me, I have my own party, it's fine, but anybody asks the business, they will have it Friday and Saturday. I think, nobody asked them if they support it or they don't support it, but what's better? They would have the parks, put on a park. They can put it on the park, right here on the grass, the tents, the parking lot right next to it. Although, you put it up there so they can bring people in town, that's slightly different for them here. So, the main street, the main street should go, if it was a main street, the tents, or the border of that area.
Main street.
Main street, then should post to go and ask. After all, it's a main street. Business. They didn't, Steve asked anybody about if they approved it or they don't want it?
He feels our doctor business, anything, they bring extra customers they need, and sit outside and have a beverage and dinner.
Yeah, I saw a lot of people sit outside.
No, 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 the thing is, it's not. To me, I have enough parking for myself. I'm not worried about myself, I'm worried for everybody else. To me, I'm there for 33 years. I've survived my life. That's what I'm worried about it. The main street, this organization is supposed to help the business, should go and ask the business if they're supportive of this project. If they don't support it, they don't have it. Have it up here, and everybody will support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, come on. Sure, I'm sorry.
I worked at one of the ones, so I just wanted to bring up the fact that there's a stop sign going west on 322 outside of the 90s, at the stopway there. It says "No Right on Red," but it's so small, and the only one is, the only sign is right outside of the 90s, which is kind of low, if you drive to the white line and stop, you really can't see it. And I've noticed in other parts in town, they have it actually up on the, where the lights actually are. And the only reason I know is because, not only like on right on red there many times, luckily I got pulled over, and I may follow it the other day, and he took it, but as I'm looking at it, I was asking at people, you know, in town, and nobody seems to know it's there. So, I think for a safety issue. And the other thing is, is that when you're trying to cross the street to go to the bank, it sometimes is taking your own life in your hands. Maybe they could put a bigger sign that says, you know, yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk, you know, where Studio 3 is, to try and get across there, so.
We'll address with Jacky, and you can call him directly anytime when you have a question on that.
Okay. He's very helpful.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, come on up.
Bobby T. Brunell, 302 North Lake Drive. Is Mr. Bartowski here this evening? Is he?
I don't think he is. I know there are representatives here, but I don't.
Okay, well, I'll speak to the representatives like you or he himself. I have been reading many articles, Mr. Bartowski, and you are referred to as a billboard bully and plaguing the main line, Delaware, Mont Belgrade, and Chester County with your huge billboards. Your articles say you think it's your First Amendment right to litter communities with billboards, and that you are, and you and your league council are in the game of corporate bullying. I also read an article you wrote, February 6, 2016, called "When Family Is Priority." Your father had passed away, and we talked about how your father downplayed his professional achievements and put his family first and foremost. That is what residents of North Lake, Farmhouse, and Devon Circle do. We put our families first and foremost. Your giant billboard on Norwood House Road has ruined our quality of life. It shines into our homes. It affects our home values by about $25,000 to $30,000 in our entire community, and it affects our ooms. I don't think your father would like the fact that you didn't consider our families. The sign was never to affect us, so fix the issue. My father raised me to have respect for, for others at all times, and if you fail, you better go back and make it good. If you want your billboard, have it shine where you posed for it to shine, change the blue shed. To Borough Council, since the sign was lit on April the 5th, you've done nothing to help the residents. You feel it only hurt a few homes. What I keep telling you affects Farmhouse, North Lake, and Devon Circle. Just drive down Farmhouse, and it looms, hangs over my home like a suspended movie theater. Everyone calls it a movie theater. It's five or six times the size it could have been. If the levee breaks in Louisiana, and there are six people left, you just got to leave them there because you did enough? The sign is not in compliance. U-Haul should have given Big D notice that the conditional use permit was approved upon sworn testament, sworn testament. And Bartowski should have been made to resolve this. Steve Solis, you were quite angry the last meeting that the article in the inquiry made Catalyst meh. Who do you work for Catalyst? The residents of Downingtown are meh because you don't care about the, you only want the $25,000. Counsel, this is another big blunder you've made. So no mandate the issue, have Catalyst fix it by involving Solis, U-Haul, and Thompson. I've been told you have no appetite to fight, and very happy with the deal you struck. I have the appetite to fight, and that will begin now, and will continue as you attempt at another term to be re-elected. There's also been a lot of other things uncovered here since we've gone to city council meetings. This entire borough ignores people because if you ignore, they go away. You laugh, you interrupt, and honestly, make a joke of yourself. You don't answer emails, and you don't work together for the people who actually work against the residents. So at the end of the day, a permit was issued for the sign on the busiest part of the bypass, where Action News reports every day, 1:13, that you see Karen Rogers standing there waiting for an accident. So if one of your kids has an accident, because they were distracted by the sign, I guess it was worth the $25,000. That's it for now.
One second. Anyone else? All right, next, we're on Good Apple, we got another floor, 111 City Office. Do we have anyone?
Well, it's a, you can sit up, or the house can take you to sit up. I look at the ones now. I don't know. It's a really good place. It's, 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 it's,[363.59]
Here we have the top of the sign, bottom of the sign. And here is the house, single floor house. So based on the elevation that you have, five and a half feet above floor level, you have the eye level of the resident looking up to the top of the sign.
So that's a person standing there, and that's what they would actually see? How much of the building?
Correct.
See from where they are?
Correct. And then the dash line down here is the, it's labeled the ground elevation between the house and where the sign is located. As you can see, as the ground, as you move away from the house, the ground slopes away and gets lower. So the, based on topography, the closer to the house, the shorter a wall or some sort of buffer would need to be in order to screen the view of the sign from the house. So initially, we asked the borough to reach out to the affected homeowners, and they would allow us to plant vegetation on their, within their property line. Feedback we received was that they did not like the idea. Based on that response, we then reached out to the homeowner, the property owner of the Roberts Automotive lot, who was able to allow us to plant on there. So...
So you reached out to them, but they're not affected, but they did say, okay, they were with you to try to help, correct?
Correct. We received, so at that point, this dash line here is the property line between the homeowner and Roberts Automotive. Due to the electrical line that runs approximately along the property line, the required plan would be set back about 10 to 15 feet so we did not interfere with the power line.
Scott, Alan, right away. There's a right way there where the lines are. Should we move them?
Oh, yeah. Further towards the sign, further onto the Roberts Automotive property.
Can you speak up just a little bit? I'm still in here.
Sorry. So now, with the 15-foot setback, the ground has sloped away further, and now we have a, we're able to measure the distance between the ground and the top of the view from the resident. So here, you have 20 feet between the ground. You need a 20-foot tall tree to fully block the sign, which we've done a similar analysis for the other properties. Here's 304 North Lake. Each house is slightly different elevation, slightly different distance from the sign to the house. In this case, 304 North Lake is a two-story house. So the view line is set from the second floor of the house. Now you have your eye level here on the second floor, and your, because of that additional height or required, the full buffer is 25 feet tall. Again, this would way beyond the Automotive property. Again, for 308 North Lake, same analysis. Again, from the second floor, we have a 23-foot fully buffer distance. And these are, here are 1 North Lake, which is across on the east side of North Lake Drive. So here, you have a single-story house. It's further elevated from 302 North Lake, to show here as a reference. Looking back at the aerial. For 301 North Lake, the view line here does cross over a portion of 302 North Lake. This portion of the house, does that, we'll be able to see a clear view of the sign, which is what we show here.
Can I ask a question? I live at 214, and I have a clear view of the sign. So...
Where's 214?
Right there, right there, right there. That's my house.
So...
So I see it from the kitchen, and it affects my son. I, he can't go out back.
Was, did you...
I received a letter.
Did you receive the letter? So here, this is the property line of the Roberts Automotive. So these plantings were focused on their property, based on the feedback we received that no homeowner wanted any plantings within their property line.
No, but I'm just saying...
Excuse me, guys. Not to get in a shouting match here. Let's try to funnel everything through, maybe we'll funnel through it, so we don't get any disorder, if you don't mind, just to try to keep it, because she'll be keeping some notes and all. So if at all possible, if you could just give your name, state who you are, and your address, so we can kind of follow it, and then they can do it. Just so we don't get 10 people hollering. So go right ahead.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe we could wait and open it up to questions from the residents?
We could.
When he's done with his...
I would love to do that, if you want to ask them all at once, after he does his presentation, and I didn't want to cut them off. If at all possible, if you could ask a question quick or finish at one time, would be great, because maybe...
Well, I just thought it would avoid them being interrupted every time they ask a question.
That'd be great. Yeah, if that's all possible, if we could do them all at once, I appreciate it. But if not...
Okay.
Go right ahead, guys, sorry.
Okay, so, yeah, this was 301 North Lake. Last one was 305 North Lake. Then you have 306 on the west side of North Lake Drive. And here, you have a two-story house. Again, this is 31 feet, very fully buffered.
They're dying.
Sorry, you really have to speak up if you can, please.
I apologize.
Your voice is just loud.
It's your turn.
Yeah, it's all right. Yeah, so obviously, as you can see, what we, the first way to try to resolve the concerns was to establish what the sightlines were from each resident that expressed that concern relative to the top edge of the sign. So again, as a kind of comprehensive study, went out, looked at these locations through topography and through our engineer, established this and said, okay, first you've got to establish, what is that height distance that would need to be buffered, or effectively buffered, from those residents? Now, we've established what those sightlines are and what those distances are, and as a result, we can then put together a planting plan, if you will, on this singular property as you see here, with the green tree line, to buffer those. Now, again, we are, this is something we are willing to do, we are offering to do. There is, for some residents, when you get beyond a 20-foot height, when you're talking about the planting of trees, there are some issues with getting them planted and established. But again, to the extent we can implement a plan that looks similar to this, effective at that 20-foot height level, at planting, which grow, on average, a foot a year, if we're shy a few feet, we will do everything we can to essentially buffer those homes. But again, as a comprehensive plan to try to resolve the concerns of those residents, this is the plan we've come up with.
Has this ever occurred before, and did you try this, and did it help?
Through multiple projects, we've involved landscaping. Again, whether it be relative to a residence that sits nearby, whether it's, there's structures that we've developed wherein residents literally live across the street and behind. And in all those cases, yes, we've worked through and implemented plans that have effectively buffered any light source that the resident could see. So yes.
Good.
Is that, is this all you're doing, is the trees?
What, yeah, what kind of trees are you going to put in? How tall were they? That's the number there, just so we can...
Yeah, Tim, you can answer that better than I can.
Light, effectively, I guess.
Yeah, so the 35 trees shown on this plan, what we've used in the past is a very effective buffer, is a green giant arbor lighty, which grows to up to 40 feet tall, and yeah, I think a minimum of one foot a year it grows.
How tall are they, Phil?
Between 18 to 20 feet.
Well, again, they can be anywhere from as short as you want. But again, as far as going out to the market and purchasing those trees at 20 feet, they're somewhat difficult to find in transport. But again, it's something we've done before, and we're willing to do here. It is costly at a 20-foot planting, but nonetheless, again, in an effort to cooperate with the borough, satisfy some of the residents' concerns, it's something that we're willing to do.
What is the approximate cost of the trees that you're talking about?
On average? I think, uh...
The total?
I think total, yeah, of more than $50,000.
A little more than $50,000, okay. Did you, I saw your first slide here, that I don't see residents from the other downtown circle? And I also, if you could plant the trees over where you're talking about, you still have the 78th parcel down below, which right now is just dirt there, but there's a proposed development for that? Yeah, and you can definitely see the billboard from there, even at ground level.
Right, I understand.
And you were asked at point blank about that specific parcel during the hearing.
I was?
No, you're helping us. And we were told it would not be impacted, and apparently that's not true.
That's not the picture we need to show.
Yeah, I have this, that was provided by Catalyst, then I did a hearing, and it cuts off at the top part of the parking lot. So almost up here, you can even talk about that. Now, I find it difficult to believe. You know your product.
Sure.
You know where it's going to be visible, and, I'm sorry, I cannot help but feel that we were misled.
We never walk into any municipality, any project, to mislead. We utilize the information we have at hand, the experts we have at hand, to establish what is true and correct. And if somehow there is a light source seen from a place that was not identified prior, again, that is something we are here trying to work with you to rectify. So to cite a site plan or an aerial that was not previously used, that's irrelevant. A site plan or an aerial itself, we could expand this out, we could zoom this in. One has nothing to do with the other. We're here to try to work with you to resolve the concerns.
Turn it off. Turn it off facing...
Guys, Scott, please don't, please, let's keep going. When it's time to come up...
Why don't they raise their hands, and then the corner?
Yes, please don't holler.
Why don't we raise hands, and then...
You're not writing a meeting script.
I am, so yes, please raise your hands, and get counsel, and then they'll let you address it, okay? Go ahead, Anne, I'm sorry, you have another question?
Yeah, I do. See, I looked at the decision, at the order, and in the order, it says that you're being bound by your testimony and by the exhibits that were presented. So I went back and I looked at the testimony, and the testimony, you know, clearly stated that that proposed development that's going to go in, the 78ers, would not be, would not be impacted. It also clearly stated that only the Norwood House Apartments, that's what you determined was going to be the affected, the only, the only community that was going to be affected by this, which is obviously not true. We were told that there were going to be louvers, the directional light, and to keep the light, I think it was a specific question, we're talking about the spread of light, and we were told that the spread of light, it was going to be clearly directed, it wasn't going way out, you might have some ambient light, but you wouldn't see the actual billboard. So I'm having a little problem here with what was presented to council, and what we approved, because we approved a sign that was not going to impact that community. The sign we approved was only going to impact Norwood House Apartments. So the fact that it's impacting somebody else is, needs to be addressed, and I do think that you have gotten quite a nice buffer trying. Because in my opinion, I don't know about this account, in my opinion, it should have been shut down immediately, should have received a second key.
Yes.
It went shut down.
Yes.
So you have had this line running for, for many months. Now, that's not going to get us anywhere as far as anything productive. So moving forward as far as productive, I would suggest that I'd like to consider, if the trees are going to cost $50,000, can you not take that $50,000 and put something instead on the sign itself to prevent the light, to prevent the sign from going into their homes? Put in some kind of a block, some kind of a louver, some kind of a whatever, but a barrier on the sign itself to restrict the light, to restrict it from sort of going on, to impact this community? Is that possible, from an engineering perspective?
From an engineering perspective, I'm sure anything is possible, but this thing was designed, engineered, to the specs that you see here, as far as weight load, wind load. So to go and add an additional structure, yeah, that would require some additional engineering. You're now talking about adding metal, I guess, panels, I'm not even sure exactly what you're asking.
Something to restrict the light, whether it's the louvers, we were kind of, I know we had talked about louvers, and it was explained like an LED TV, that if you're standing at the sign, you don't see it, you have to be straight on in order to see it, and we see here, this is not an LED TV, this is, you can see it from all angles, very clearly, very clearly. You see the color, you see everything about it. So are there louvers, since that was...
No.
That was an option.
No, not mine, no.
Okay, so that's not even accurate? That was just more testimony.
I'm sorry, what is, what accurate?
About louvers, that there are no louvers, that there's nothing there? I mean, am I mistaken there?
To the extent that there was this, again, I don't memorize the testimony, but if he was referring to louvers, he may have been referring to individual panels themselves, and the LEDs, and how those individual panels are constructed.
Okay.
Not louvers as in large louvers, otherwise we would have seen them on a site plan or referenced somewhere as an additional structure on top of what was approved.
Okay, I'll accept that. I would just say that it was presented, that it's sort of more like an LED TV, where we would see it from the side. So I'd say that, you know, we appreciate you going and doing an engineering thing. Unfortunately, it's my opinion that it's not quite good enough, because these people should not be impacted by this billboard. This is not what council approved. We did not approve something that's going to destroy a community.
Do we have other kind of questions, Dan?
Just to follow up on that.
Oh, sorry, go right ahead.
There was one item that was beyond our control that occurred after our testimony and after your approval, was this island here, that is part of the right-of-way for the highway, was clear-cut down, there are dirt, when prior to that, there was 50-foot trees, this was fully wooded.
Nothing was in. Do you have anything that, do you have anything that's placed over on our guys? Do you have anything that shows that? Do we have anything, Tom?
I think if you look on that aerial, we did present on, it does show four, four trees.
Tom, have you actually found that shows that the shrub there?
The original exhibit that Phil had...
I'm looking at it right now.
...showed those three. They weren't there, Pen did clear them at some point.
I like doing that. And that changed, and that would change, you guys want to see?
Well, at the end, you see this is, the sightline goes through that triangle.
Oh, that's what changes the sightline, because all the shrubbery is here, is that why the sightline doesn't protect that as well?
Through initial application, through the hearings, through the permitting process, that entire triangle, that site triangle, which was subsequently cleared by PENDOT, had foliage, which again, through past pictures, through that, even if you went to Google Earth, depending on the date of it, you would see full foliage in that triangle.
Yeah, but that does, that still would block, that's what it blocked, or think, but that's the woman who spoke with her son.
Right.
So it still wasn't shown during exhibit.
Not on that lower triangle, it wasn't. It was on the upper end of it, not the lower end.
Excuse me, guys, please, please don't holler, you guys. Please wait your turn, come up. Please, let's be respectful of them, okay? That's all I ask, to be respectful.
Did you call on us then?
Yeah, yes, we will get up, yes, you will get a chance, we will wait till they got done.
We're going to forget, we need to talk to them.
Anne had asked, if you want to raise your hand, you can right now.
I was.
Okay, I'll tell you, I promise. Thank you. Go ahead, guys.
So no, that was just, Tim just wanted to make the point that that was one factor that was in existence at the time, was that one area that subsequently was trimmed down by a pen dot outside of anybody's control.
Pat, I'm sorry. Pat?
Now, could I listen a little more, Chip?
Of course. Before you ask your question, absolutely, I'm sorry. Alan, you have any questions while we're going? Kind of spread it out a little bit, we can come back.
Any other ideas or options on the table at all? Or is this...
Again, no, I mean, we're doing our best to address those concerns.
I mean, is there any other consideration, maybe?
If there's suggestions, we're open to hear, but as far as functionability of the sign, the knit level, everything has been reduced to its minimum. As far as the operation hours, all of that has been established. So what we're just trying to do is take the existing structure we have, and the operational parameters that we've agreed to and are permitted, and try to address concerns with that in place.
So your professional opinion is, you think these go up at the start, it should minimize, if not eliminate, at least those houses there that are a great concern?
We wouldn't spend the time and money to put this together in the additional 50-plus to the stat. Yes, yeah, if we didn't think that it would effectively buffer the sign. Again, we've done this before on other projects, so that's our professional opinion.
So if we put these up, and it needs another tree or something, or a thing, you're willing to come out and take a look at it, you will follow up and see how it's doing? Or you feel as though this should take care of most of the problem?
Yes, again, the idea of the elevation study was, so we're not guessing as far as what may or may not work. So to the extent that we all know what we're going in with, as far as the height that we're dealing with, and the height of the vegetation and planting, there should be no ambiguity. And if they're planted day one, in that first year, trees die, that happens, we would come out, we maintain and replace those dead or dying trees for that first year.
Well, we don't have an expert with, just a minute, please. Tom, you looked at it, but when you're looking at these sightlines, do the numbers add up to you? I mean, they're just hung out quickly, or...
I think 20-foot trees is the maximum they should try and plant for the maximum benefit of keeping them alive, and not going through this every year. Some of those sites, this is, were over 20 feet, if you remember the elevation plans. So it's going to take a few years, and every year thereafter, it's going to get even better and better, and these trees grow to how tall?
40, 40 feet.
40 feet, so ultimately, it'll be a huge buffer, but they're going to need some patience till they grow. They'll put an irrigation system in, and that's the best we can do for a buffer. The only thing I will say is, the woman regarding 214 North Lake Drive was sent a certified letter. My records did not have a reply. Mr. Sullivan sent out a letter and asked for a reply if they were concerned. So when I gave them the data from all the residents' questions here communicated, I did not have a reply under that address. So I don't know if we missed something, or...
No, you didn't, so I was away, and when I got home, it was after...
Okay, so that's why 214 was not addressed. I don't know if you want to discuss that now and add a few more trees?
Well, and, and, excuse me, Bobby, and yes, we can do that if there is other houses possibly you could take a look at, but guys, if they, if there is a few more houses, would you look at to see if it's wider, or are we running out of property, or what do you...
Again, we were hoping to come here today, kind of with those addresses established, and find and resolve for those. To the extent that there's an additional home that was missed, yes, we'd be willing to accommodate and fix it.
Hey, Kelly, Kelly, you started reasoning, you're holding your hand up forever. Let me get you, then we'll go back to you.
I have one more question. I wish I knew the elevation.
This minute, please, we've got Kelly.
Are you sure?
Yeah, no, you can hold your hand up forever. Go right ahead.
Okay, so you had mentioned that you did this at the ground level initially?
I'm sorry.
When you surveyed the land?
I'm not sure what you're asking, I'm sorry.
When you surveyed the land for the billboard, you surveyed it at the ground level initially? Or you had carried shots? I don't remember that.
I'm sorry, can you say you gave me the address so we can have for the record? I'm sorry.
Kelly made, 304 North Lake Drive.
I'm getting used to the beep, I'm sorry. Thank you.
When you say surveyed, so we surveyed the property to build the sign, and then we went through an engineer and looked at topography, with the individual addresses relative to the scene. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
And when did that start? Your survey, when you went out to the site?
You mean for this? I'm sorry, when I heard your survey, I think of survey of the subject property.
To the site. Initially. Beginning.
So you're saying this whole, this whole area was actually addressed?
What I'm trying to get at is, if you stand where the pole is, where the billboard is, you could, if you look directly where those sightlines are, with those trees that are there, you still see in my backyard. So I'm offended that you claim that you've done all you can, when you could easily look into my backyard with the trees up as it is now. It's not a question, it's a statement. I'm letting you know.
I, I...
That's one of my...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I've got many.
Go get you.
Why has this taken two months for you to come to this? If you said that this had come, and I come out attacking because I feel offended, so I don't want you to take it personally, it's not personal, but it is personal to me. It's my home, it's my view, it's my livelihood, it's my personal safety, my child's safety, as are the neighbors in this that are here. So you know, it is personal. Take it personal. It's taken two months. This is, this structure's been up for two months. You claimed, and I wrote it down, you said, "There's been constant conversations with the borough." Why about the residents? Why did it take almost a month for us to get a certified letter, and then another month for you to say, "Oh, yeah, we saw that the sightlines are wrong, and we're going to put trees up"? Why did that take two months? It's two months of their time.
Yeah, within...
Oh, I'm still talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's been, it's been two months of their time that we keep coming at them and attacking them as if it's their fault. So come to find out, they were misinformed. And you answered a couple of my questions about plant height, and then you had made mention that you're going to maintain the trees for the first year, if, say that a tree does, does not take to the ground very well after irrigation. What about after the first year? What if there's a snowstorm and, or an ice storm, and a tree falls down? Is that now our responsibility, or the borough's responsibility? Because you only said you're only taking care of it after the first, during that first year, to maintain it. I think the borough needs to ensure that that's not the case, that it's your responsibility from here on out.
Are you done?
I'm done.
I want to say something.
Just a minute, I, the lady back here's been waiting, waiting. I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, me?
Yes, I'm sorry, your name is? Your address, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sean Kelly, 308 North Lake Drive.
Thank you.
Well, first, if the trees that you were talking about that got knocked down, if they were up, who would have signed right there if all those trees were blocking it? So cars are passing by, and they won't even see the sign, I'm just confused. You had to have known something in order to say, "Oh, I'm going to put a sign here, oh, but there's like thousands of trees right here, let me just still put it up," hoping that people could see through the trees to see the sign? I'm confused about that. Can you explain that?
Can we explain it? Sure. When you're traveling westbound, and you're looking at a face across traffic, the visibility of that, and the foliage that was there, didn't obstruct the view enough to where it would deter us from doing the sign? So it's not as if we had some inside knowledge as the PENDOT, where they clear, we're not privy to that. The fact that they came subsequent and cleared that, that was news to us. You could still see this sign face in cross-traffic, the way we have it posted.
Anything else? I'm sorry, yeah. Anything else?
So when you're coming down Farmhouse, when you're coming down Farmhouse, you don't even have to be in our cul-de-sac, or even the cul-de-sac right in front of it, you're coming down the street and you see it. So what are you going to do to make sure that as people are coming down our street, they don't see it?
There's, standing here today, I can't tell you, I'm going to ensure that the visibility of this sign will be obstructed from every single angle of every single home and or street absent Route 30. I can't do that. What I'm here to do...
Well, you have to, but that's...
No, I don't, I don't have to, but I appreciate that. I'm here trying to resolve the issues of the residents.
Well, what you did was right, though. So you, instead of like, you probably went into the situation thinking, "We're going to put this up because that's what we can do, and we're going to say all these things", and then it goes up, and you're like, "Okay, they're going to be really mad that you do it every single township you go to, because we all know your background." And then you're saying, "Oh, we can put up trees just to suffice, you know, like, you know, calm you guys down." That's not okay. Like, you need to either, like, take it down or completely fix it so no one sees it. It's not okay.
He's right.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
My name's Vicki Gilpin, and I live at 304 North Lake Drive. And I have a few comments and questions. My first comment was, when you said that you surveyed and the trees and so forth were there, and it obstructed the view that we wouldn't be able to see it, and then when we put the sign up, they were gone. My question is, how could you proceed with going through with that if you know that the circumstances have changed? circumstances have changed? Why would you, why don't you proceed with that? Because that wasn't the deal that was made. And you went through with something that you didn't have thoroughly investigated and now we're stuck with this issue. So my question to you is, why wasn't this taken care of? Why did you proceed knowing that what you presented was not correct at that point?
Sorry, is that a question?
Yeah, I said it twice. Yes.
We have the permits and approvals?
No, you had permits.
If you want to ask a question, we can answer it, I'll answer, I'll wait until you ask it again.
But listen, you had permits and it did not. The permits were not correct, they were not accurate. And you proceeded with the plan and you knew that. So my question is, why would you do that knowing that what you were building was not properly presented, counseled into our community? Will we go and answer that?
They can't make a question.
I mean, you've got houses, these houses start at over 750 feet away. And if you're standing at the top of the sign, which Tim went out and did, to sit at the top of the sign, to look down, to check the visibility of houses, I don't, I'm not glaring at a bunch of backyards within 10 feet of our sign.
But that wasn't my question. My question was, if you knew that what you presented...
We don't alter the plans that we have as far as correcting...
But what you presented was inaccurate and even that...
I'm sorry you feel that way.
Well, no, don't be sorry, do something about it.
That's what we're here to do, that's why we're here talking.
No, because the other issue, if you go back to where my property is, can you please do that? 301.
211.
Okay, if you go back, you're, what is that, a view shed? That's inaccurate. There was a picture that was put in the Inquirer of my property. There was a full, clear view, front, back, side. Full picture of that is in the newspaper. So this is wrong. And not only is this affecting me like that, how is it affecting the people on Farmhouse? So, you know, I understand that you're saying that direct line, but what about the part of my home that's in the cul-de-sac? If you could please go back to my show, the cul-de-sac, the, the actual picture of our homes?
The aerial there.
Yeah, the aerial. What do those numbers mean? 279, 250?
Those are the elevations.
Okay. Well, you see, you only have it going once, you see how it elevates through my yard.
Right, I think the picture was taken around here.
Correct.
It shows the whole thing in my yard.
Right, but yeah, our, our analysis was done here.
Right, that, but that still affects my property.
Oh, you're saying it goes up higher in the back?
It does. It's, there was a picture in the Inquirer that showed that angle. And no, it's a clear view of my property, my cars, my house, my roof, clear view of it. And it was in the newspaper. And you're telling me that a 20, what, 20...
Foot tree.
What, 23 to 25, or no, 23 to 26 foot tree is going to only protect the front of my house, but what about the rest of it? I do more than come out in the front, I may go outside in the back.
Thanks, thank you. Bob, you have your hand raised?
Who? Me?
Yes, you have your hand raised.
A lot of other people have their hand raised too. I want to know something.
I'm sorry, your name and address.
Bobby J. Brumel, 302 North Lake Drive. Tim, you are not an engineer, you just, what is your role at Catalyst?
I work on the, I have an engineering degree.
Oh, you do?
I do.
Okay, and you sir, what is your job at Catalyst?
I'm a partner in the company.
But you're not an engineer?
I'm not an engineer, that's why we hired third-party professionals to do this kind of work.
Again, we come to this council meeting and all we hear are trees, 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 trees in my backyard. Mr. Uhas, you never got an answer from me as trees in my backyard, nor I don't think from Kelly Bean, but I won't speak for her. Now it's trees somewhere else, but that does not help the residents on Farmhouse or on Devon Circle. And if I were to put my house up for sale and you rode down Farmhouse to look at Lake Drive and if you built trees in back of my house to just shut so it wouldn't come in my sunroom or my back deck or my bedrooms, still a person riding down Farmhouse would say, "Look at that atrocity hanging over our house, I would never want to buy it".
Exactly.
And it has, you've just taken money out of my pocket, I've only lived here since September. I know what houses go for up there. They sell in a day on Lake Drive and North Lake. I almost bought two. One of them on Nor, on Lake Drive, I had to go before it went up for sale, Ray PJ, and the size was not adequate. And then I sold my house in Parksburg because it was beautiful in two weeks and came here to North Lake and I had a look at it before it went up for sale because they sell in a day. Houses on Lake Drive, Devon Circle and Farmhouse sell in a day at full asking price. So we're not going to take this, you know? And another thing is, this is my last statement right now, this piece of metal went up in no time. I mean, I was laying in bed at five, six o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, you could hear the ping, ping, ping. That thing went up in no time. And it also was lit on April the 5th. And it was lit in time for summertime to come so that natural tree buffers would help Catalyst. It was perfect timing on the part of the company, perfect timing. Now, if it only took a matter of a couple of weeks to get the piece of tin and metal and flashlights up there, I suggest you do something to turn it or do whatever.
I'm sorry, yes, back there, fellow, sorry.
Tom McMurray, 410 Farmhouse, I'll speak for Farmhouse. Yes, we can see that and the elevation continues on up the hill, so we are affected too when the trees drop their leaves, same deal in April. We're quite surprised. My question is maybe to you and to Council, I believe though you showed a sign that had the U-angle towards, yeah. So if that's the proposal, why can't we bring that into compliance? I missed the part where you can't bring that to be in compliance with what you presented to Council. Do you have that? Do you, I mean, that's, am I wrong on that? I mean, I'm wrong in that. That is the proposed, the proposed view, if you will, of the sign, which clearly that is not the case. So if you can't bring this to compliance to the owners or, I know with laptops, you know, you can adjust, they have the viewing angle. Can the sign be turned or can, you know, are there other lead technologies that brings it into compliance? Clearly, that shows a, an angle that's towards the highway and not towards anywhere else. So I'd like you to address that, please.
Get to that, speak that way.
We received this very thick packet to go over and one of the paragraphs that I kind of took was, "The above comments are made with the understanding that all existing features of topography are accurately represented on the plans and that all designs, calculations and surveys are accurate and have been prepared in accordance with current laws, et cetera." This is not what is up and this is what I voted on. So what do you do in this situation when you brought up something that is not what you said you were going to do?
Are you saying because the angle is different? I'm sure they put up the sign and said they were put up, but you're saying the angle was different?
Yes, the angles that we approved and the comments in the testimony. I mean, there are several pictures in this packet that do not reflect on our neighborhood.
Well, first off, the angle that's actually physically there versus this is more so oriented towards the roads than what I perceive to be on this, number one. Number two, this as an exhibit is not a certified plan by an engineer. This was an exhibit utilized to demonstrate through the process of the hearing.
So it's a lie?
And it was relative to the property across the street.
But I specifically asked during that meeting if it was going to have an effect on that neighborhood and I was told no. That's why I voted.
We did, we did ask what would be effective and the best I could remember is we would ask for more restrictions or, because that's normal house road was, was the one place that this would be affected. Now, I don't know if, when we said affected, that you wouldn't see it or whether it would be affected outside of what our limitations are, our restrictions are, how far can you see it, Tom? What's, what do we have on the books that they have to meet? Now, now we come with this view shed, I didn't know what it was, so I don't know. I, I don't know if you were saying to the attorney you couldn't see it, but I thought, I was under the understanding that within our restrictions, which are...
The testimony of the experts talked about the measurement of light at 250 feet. And the testimony stated, fire number, right, that's what's saying you will see the sign just like you can see a star. When you turn around, you can't see the light from the star shining over your shoulder.
That's a normal way of judging light?
Light works, yeah.
That's how it's measured or whatever?
Right, right. And then I think the yellow line on the exhibit has talked about, might have been some confusion. The left, yellow line on the exhibit was not, in my understanding of engineering, was not a limit of the view of the sign, it was showing the impact of the apartments that could see the sign backwards. And they have misinterpreted that to say, "That's the only people who could ever see the sign".
Oh, I misunderstood the question. Yes, so the yellow that is on this exhibit as provided, again, is relative to the property across the street. And again, to stand here today and we proactively went and saw that there may be concern with that property. We proactively said, "Okay, let's try to resolve that before there's an issue". If we foresaw an issue with Nor Road, as it's been insinuated here, there was some bait and switch, we would have tried to address it up front. It behooves us to take care of that all up front. So at the time that the sign is constructed and operational, that there are no issues. And that's why we're here again tonight. This was unforeseen that some neighbors over there could see a light source from the sign and that's why we're here tonight to try to resolve.
You just did, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Me?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm Joan DiVerdino and I live at 306 North Lake Drive and I've been there for 43 years. And I'm the one that has the buffer, but I would like to be included in the planting of the shrubs because I planted them 31 years ago and they're not looking the greatest. And I think I'm going to have to take them down because they're kind of bending into my pool. So I would, I would like to be included and not excluded.
What's your address, ma'am? I'm sorry.
306 North Lake Drive. Joan DiVerdino.
So my name's Krista Reynolds and I'm at 303 North Lake Drive.
I'm sorry, I got in here.
I'm sorry, my name, it's Krista Reynolds and I'm at 303 North Lake Drive. So when I look at this photo, my house has no arrow to it and I'm like, at the present time, because of the trees that are in my neighbor's yards, I can't see the sign when I'm in my house or when I'm on my property, but it is very prevalent as I drive through the property and so affects my home values because unfortunately it's affecting all the home values in my neighborhood. So I too would like to make sure that, you know, as trees are going up or trees are going down, that my house is included in this evaluation as well. Additionally, I guess I feel a little bit confused why we're using this type of sign in this day and age when we have the ability to have polarized signs that are only seen head-on. So I feel a little confused as to why an organization such as yours would take this route, knowing that honestly, you would be able to see it from all realm around the world versus just straight on, on the highway. So I feel a little confused by that. But I'd also like to understand from the council and, and the borough, what can you, like, what is the recourse now if they are completely out of alignment with what they put into place here? What's your recourse to stop this?
Well, our solicitor commented about everything.
Okay, thank you.
I would actually want to make sure her question gets addressed because none of us are experts on these signs. She seems to have some bad knowledge on this. Other signs that could have been put in place that wouldn't have affected, I mean, this is a residential neighborhood, we put up signs in residential neighborhoods and other communities, which was heard before, with some pushback. Is there something that could have been put up here that would have restricted the view from these residents?
Is this a state-of-the-art sign now? Is this the newest thing out or is there...
Yeah, so the, the sign utilized here is, is the same technology that you see everywhere else. There is no outdoor advertising sign that accomplishes exactly what you're stating. The technology that we use is, and although you may have some disagreement, as far as the industry goes, it's the highest quality, highest brand LED that you can buy. So as far as some other product that may exist from what you're referring, it doesn't exist.
It does make sense to me because I, there are, I can't, again, can't see my LED television when I'm standing on the side of it, but I can certainly see yours all over Downingtown. With your new LED bright, like lights, like I have not, the whole neighborhood is lit up. Even at the dimmest level. And I feel I have to leave this on again.
Yes, yes, turn back, I'm sorry, name and address again, please.
He just bit me.
Name and address again.
Sorry, Donna Condon, 214 North Lake Drive. And apologies to Council and my neighbors for not being here before, but I'm a single mom and I'm taking him out of his element by bringing him here. Again, as I said in my opening, when I had the opportunity to speak, why can't you just turn it off on the westbound side? Just alleviate everything, it doesn't affect anybody on the eastbound side. And why would you, even though Norwood House is completely not even, I don't think they're part of the borough, why would you purposely want to shine something in people who are paying money to, to live there? I just don't understand why the greed, you, you know, why don't you care? Would you want this in your backyard? You're married, do you have children? Do you want, if you had a special needs child, do you want to not let your child go out back? Do you want to see your son in his stim staring at something? I'm a single mother, I can't afford to go move somewhere else. And I moved here because it was a beautiful residential neighborhood, I had the woods in the back. Now my son can't go out back because it's affecting his livelihood. I just, I just, it just really upsets me because it's all about money, how much money you can put in your pocket. You know, apparently you weren't clear with Council and you don't care. I would love to have this shining in on your property wherever you live. Would you like for your children not to be able to go out and play? Or their child, their daughter? They have to put room darkening shades in their rooms so their daughter can sleep at night. You're taking away quality of life. We're, you know, we're middle America, we're just trying to live and survive. And I'm sure, you know, as a partner, you know, you probably live somewhere else, but you know, we like, love it here, but not now. And the value of our homes is going down, even if we could afford to move, we can't afford to move because the value of our homes has decreased. And that's all I have to say and just, and I have to go, I apologize. Thank you.
You're just right, just go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else like that? You're, you're, you're on that. Go back.
Don Wyland, I live on Devon Circle. Empathy to all the folks on North Lakes. Devon Circle is now blinded from deciduous trees. Our elevation is at least 15 to 20 feet higher than the folks on Lake. What's going to happen October through March? We will have a full shot. Nothing has been said without anything to address beyond the four folks that are suffering immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, you put your hand up.
Yeah, Tom McMurray, Farmhouse. I'd asked earlier if the sign could be turned, I feel really bad, really selfish for asking that, but, because it's still going to affect the apartments. But obviously, if the sign returned, you know, it's, it's still going to get to the audience, you can still see it coming up westbound. Can the sign be turned?
Too many angles, the angle, the way it faces the roadway versus the citizens.
Instead of being parallel to...
I can answer that.
I know you said everything was engineered and built to the specs to where it is, but do you have that answer tonight, whether there is any adjustments on it or do you feel so that the way it was built is actually there?
No, the way it's been built, it's been built and engineered, directed towards the roadway at the right angle. The answer is no, the angle it faces can't be shifted.
Can I, can I ask why you didn't include in our packet drawings of our part of the town if you thought it was going to affect Norwood and you gave us pictures of the Norwood House? Why didn't we get pictures of what would happen to our neighborhood in the pack?
It was never anticipated that Norwood, there would be an issue on Norwood.
No, no, no.
North Lake.
Like this picture, we didn't get a picture like this. We never saw that community at all in any of the...
We've got many pictures in here about Norwood because you said, we were told it was only going to affect Norwood, but we got no pictures of our own community in this packet that we were supposed to vote on.
Did those trees affect that, that was clear down, was that why? Because you said there was...
It was never anticipated you'd see anything from that roadway, given that site triangle, that pen dot right away.
But why not? Like, your, your job is to put up those.
Sure.
You put them up in residential neighborhoods before and got pushback. You should have shown us every possible information you had. You can't say we...
To the extent the township ordinance asked for, to the extent that the township ordinance asked for, or through the process it was asked for, you have no problem providing.
There's no, it's clear that those trees in that pen dot right away would not have blocked the vision from 200 North Lake Drive, that's right. You should have known that. It's one thing to say, we made a mistake, we should have included it, but your job's to put up billboards. You put them up in residential neighborhoods all the time, and you run into these problems. You should have anticipated the problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay, keep your 301 North Lake Drive sign. You keep bringing up the pen dot right away and the trees. You say they block the view shed from our development. What happened, just as Tom asked, in the fall, those trees leaves Trump. It's a wide open shot to our development. You also showed a view shot from the public sign to our development. You can't see our houses through the trees. Ever tried to look backwards through a peephole? You don't see much, standing outside, looking through that hole. Try standing on the other side. Big difference.
PJ Peyton, Fremont True North Lake. The green lines you're showing on this aerial picture, I'll tell you what, there's probably about 100 more that could come into play for all the other homes that are close to the bypass. And also on Farmhouse, all the way up the street, and on the elevations on Devon. And it's funny that Norwood House happens to be on the other side of the bypass. The other side of the bypass. And now those other pictures you had that showed full foliage when you were on top of that sign, nine months out of the year, there's not gonna be foliage there. Nine months out of the year, that's what we're gonna see, is that big giant, the biggest thing you could put up there, the biggest, greatest, highest technology LED lights you could put up there, that there's no way it can be diverted. Nobody, it was built there, so you could see that from every angle possible. And you get told these guys in council that there was a different type of a sign, apparently gonna be put up with louvers? You didn't do what you said you were gonna do. You deceived these guys. You haven't met your contract, and frankly, zoning should be fine in your butt, and you should be turning the damn thing off until you met your contract and contract. The contract has not been met. They're professionals at doing this. They did it at high rate of speed. That thing went up lightning fast. So that nobody, we didn't know it was going up until it was lit. We didn't know that thing until we came home Tuesday night, and bam! That's when our neighborhood knew that sign was going up. It's total deception on your part. You guys are professionals at this. You've done it before, and you've gone through hell with other communities still, and still you're doing it. And now we are really biting the bullet, and it's hurting all of us. $25,000 a year to the Downingtown Borough doesn't come close to a needle in the haystack as far as the property values, that will probably, so many more houses that are affected on here forever, that are gonna see that sign every frickin' day and every night.
Let me just...
Every day, every night.
Anyone else?
I have one more there.
Turn it off.
So to piggyback on Kelly May, 304 North Lake Drive, to piggyback on what PJ Peyton had said, you're making $25,000. The borough would essentially make $25,000 annually off of your company. Our realtor, well, I'm gonna backtrack on this. According to the testimony on page, I believe, 68, and in your conditional use hearing, number 42 and 43, it says there's no evidence presented that it would have a negative impact on the surrounding properties, and that it would not affect adjacent properties, the value of adjacent properties. According to our realtor, we would have to, in order to have anybody even look at our house, we'd have to drop the value $25,000 to $30,000.
Do you care?
Well, to the extent you're talking about testimony versus what your realtor is telling you, I can't account for your realtor or anybody else's.
The testimony...
Counting a realtor that may have an opinion as far as value and a D-Dot.
All right, well, according to the conditional use, it said that the value of adjacent properties would not be affected.
Can we have a statement from your realtor stating that?
I can put it center to you.
You pray to one of them?
Not waiting a second.
I mean, you pray, you had to re-praise?
I can get it.
Just, I mean, just, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
My realtor wasn't here.
I'm sorry, Bob, name and address, please.
Bobby Jerry Brumel, 302 North Lake Drive. Downingtown, Pennsylvania, 19335. My realtor was gonna be here tonight, but he had to commit with his children. My friend on Farmhouse said, can't you change the sign? He asked you, and you gave him a direct answer, but you're not an engineer. So, well, how did you come up with the answer so quickly? Is it that you can't change the sign, or you just won't? Because it seems like you just don't want to. Any more pennies out of your pocket is like, not acceptable. So provide an answer, please.
Any more pennies out of our pocket? We're here trying to find a resolve. We're not required to be here. We're not insistent to be here. There's nothing under the ordinance that requires us to be here. We're here to try and work with you and with Borough to resolve this.
Okay, but you just said you're not an engineer, but why can't you change the sign so that the view shed does not affect North Lake, Farmhouse, Devon Circle, and the entire Sunnybrook community?
And Bobby, and just so I can make a comment. When they turn it, will the view shed affect other houses? That's the other thing we have to take into consideration.
Well, it was supposed to affect Norwood House apartments, and you guys were okay with that. And trees were gonna be put up in front of Norwood House apartments. But it was never supposed to affect our community. So why can't the sign be changed?
I don't want to answer for that, but I thought that you said the way it was engineered and designed, that it's placement and the way it's put in.
Anything can be done.
I don't think you can just twist those things, can you? Everything is stress loaded now, and all that. Aren't they, is that the way they do it? When they're engineered and rebuilt? There's gotta be tolerances and changes. Just don't know what the tolerance is, how much they can be changed, or...
You have to re-engineer it, like you said, with the loads, and see what can be done. I don't know how many LEDs are inside, probably a lot. But if it's just that product, it's not set up to do that. He's not aware of any other products that could do that, that well.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Brian Kelly, 308 North Lake.
Sorry, louder, I can't hear.
308 North Lake, Brian Kelly. You keep mentioning that you're here. You're here on your own admission, sir. I don't know your name.
Patrick.
Patrick, you say you're here on your own admission, as if you're our knight in shining armor. You're gonna save us?
No.
Why don't you just turn it off on the westbound side? Just answer that question. Why won't you turn it off on the westbound side?
This is, at the end of the day, there is a business element to this, and this does take time. So everybody standing here has a house and has a family, as does everybody that works within our company. This is a business. So going through and following the process that was set forth by the Borough, just as in any other municipality, we followed that process. Why can't we turn it off? Because we've invested a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of resources into establishing this location, just as any other location, just as any business works very hard to establish their product.
Worth the session.
Guys, please, please don't holler. Please. I just answered. Please.
Are you getting offended by the questions we're asking?
No, not at all.
I'm sensing aggression from you.
Not at all.
Okay.
Well, so... There's a lot of aggression in the room from everyone, so let's just... I feel too from everyone, so...
So you said you spent a lot of money into developing this. How come you didn't know it was gonna affect our house? How much money did you spend? I don't understand. You keep telling me you spent all this money to develop this. And then you show me a picture of this guy standing on the billboard in the middle of summer. What about the winter? Then you kept, you said, I don't see the back of anybody's house. Then you will see the back of my house.
I didn't show up here saying, look at this picture.
I didn't want to show it up here. I'm just asking a question.
Guys, what I think we have here, I don't want to end it. We had a presentation. We had a company come in. This is what their suggestion to try, to see if it... We had some legal questions, then Mark would go through the whole thing, like you did last time, and kind of explain. I think this is what you're here to present us. We've heard most of the concerns, and we'll see if this will help. Any, if not, all the concerns. Mark, I think we'll end the presentation.
I have questions, Mr. President.
Yes, okay, just a minute, please. And Mark, if you can come up there, maybe we can turn the lights on, bring it back up.
Well, I have some questions regarding what's on the screen.
Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I have one on that side.
Yeah, there are two different screens that I wanted to look at. And this one here, I see that, well, we did talk about the cul-de-sac, the next cul-de-sac over. There are houses that are empty and that do see the sign, and they weren't taken into consideration. And I don't see how you can possibly buffer them with the trees. But the other thing is that now down there, the dirt part, the 7A parcel, there's no buffering for them. So that is, that is an unresolved issue, that I don't, you didn't present any possible resolution for that, which would need to be addressed. Then I had the...
Do you think there's probably houses built there? Do you think there's probably houses built there?
There might be houses built there. I think we have to take that into consideration. Then the other screen I'd like to look at is the one view from the top of the sign. Could you go to that screen, please? Okay, so I'm looking at the view from the top of the sign, and you see where the pen dot took the trees away. But if you imagine trees are there, I, I don't know. I can still see straight across to where those people's houses would be. You can see straight across the Roberts parking lot. Roberts is the one that was gonna put up the tree buffer. But, so I'm failing to see, you don't feel it, and there's kind of, we're relying on, oh, the pen dots are down the trees, pen dots are down the trees. But I can imagine a whole bunch of trees there, and I'd still be able to see across the Robert garden wall and into these people's backyard. So I'd like to just kind of nip that one in the bud, no pun intended, but I just don't like to stop that line of talking and justifying, you know, saying that it's because of the pen dot trees, okay?
Yeah, the triangle, the triangle continues down to where the road intersects with the road that you're going in. So I think what you're seeing here is a complete picture of how large the triangle is, and what how far down the trees extended.
And they were, what kind of trees? What kind of trees were it? Deciduous. There were deciduous trees, right?
I'm not sure.
They were. So now, the other thing I would like to, there's one thing that, as far as the Roberts putting in the trees, Roberts Autumnall putting in the trees, that's very, very kind of them. Are they willing to take care of the trees? Are they willing to have an easement on their property in perpetuity? So if they sell the property, that, those trees are gonna stay there, no matter what? Have you talked to them about that? Are they interested in, are they considered, are they willing to do that? I don't think you can make that presentation if you haven't addressed that. I don't think you can present that as a solution, because that's not a solution. That's a temporary fix. If you haven't worked with Roberts Autumnall, you can't walk in here. If you cannot walk in here and say, we've worked with Roberts, they're gonna have an easement on their property in perpetuity with these trees that are gonna create a nice barrier that we, Markowski, we are going to maintain in perpetuity as long as that sign is up. Unless you can do that, I don't think that you can offer that as a solution, the barrier trees, okay? All right, so I'd like to address that one, too. Now, the other thing, one more thing for you guys. And I think this is pretty important. It's important for our solicitor to hear as well, and our zoning officer, all right? In...
Excuse me, can I wrap this presentation?
No, you can go ahead.
We can ask the legal stuff if you don't mind. Just so we can get the lights back on, if you don't mind, guys, can you shut this down? Turn the lights off. Mark, if you can come up, sounds like you have a few legal questions, and you can kind of present... Kelly, I just got a little statement from that person.
What was it about that picture?
Oh, the picture's gone.
I have to say my question. Those trees in that triangle, there were some trees, but it was more towards the bypass, and everything on the lower elevation was just high grass. So regardless, it would have affected the bypass, not the houses.
I saw the trees.
Because I, well, I live there, and I take that road every day, so I'm just...
I mean, another concern is when they change the bypass, we don't know what's gonna happen, how close they're gonna come. Whether they're gonna be right or not. There's a lot of things that could change there, so... But anyway, Mark, can you kind of?
Do it.
I know you heard several questions, and you made a statement last time about, within the law, what they did, if they, what presentation they did, legal issues and stuff like that. They said about Tom McFarlane's violations of the law. And last time you had made a little presentation.
Sure.
Let us agree, bring that again, so we can hear that.
I'm sorry, and right now, I asked him a question. Right now, I asked him a question.
No, no, I'm sorry. Mr. President, point of order, Mr. President, point of order. I have the floor. I, no, 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 no.
And we said we're gonna do the legal, so if you get it, please respect the chair.
I had the floor, and I did not, you said you wanted to bring up the lights. So I still have the floor.
And the solicitors.
And I have some questions, and I'm gonna direct them to the solicitor.
Can I get the solicitor to answer the questions, and then you can ask all you want?
I'm asking now, because I...
Let her ask now.
Let her ask.
Let her talk.
Point of affirmation, Mr. President. You've kind of like laid off. I have the floor.
We haven't come in and equally on all these questions.
This is what I talked about.
Please, I asked you to...
Can we please, can we please, I asked, I asked. Listen, I have the floor. I have, I want to address this with the solicitor. I also want our zoning officer to hear this. Once I do this, I would be happy to hear their response. I would be happy if your...
I'm gonna make you happy, so go ahead.
Thank you. That is very... All right, and then this is also you guys, too. Now, I want to read just a couple things from the transcript. This is sworn testimony, all right? Counselor McGowan said, we were talking about the new development that might come in, is that, that down the corner here in the... And Counselor Zaro said, garden parks. Mr. Sullivan said, yeah. Okay, so we're talking about that 7A parcel in the dirt right now. And Counselor McGowan said, would that be affected by the light? And the response was, no. Sworn testimony. Okay. Then we'll go to the next one. When the spread is introduced, the spread of light, it actually directs the light proportionally. This is from you guys. The spread of lights introduced, it actually directs the light proportionally between the two directions on the Route 30 bypass more efficiently. And then it says it minimizes light spillage to either side. Okay. And then we're gonna come over to here, where it says, have a discussion with the apartment complex, the landscape buffer. If it's doing, if it's, it said, we propose that landscape buffer out of the, a notice of caution. And I lost my other page. Unfortunately, there was another one where it was like, technology's designed to focus the viewable image straight in the area you're pointing in. Straight in the area you're pointing in, which this image doesn't cover it. You're not going to see that. I asked, will they see any ambient light from it, when talking about adjacent properties? And he said, sure. So the way the technology is designed, they're not designed to project light in an outward direction. So everything that was said, the spread is on the sign, it's designed at 20 feet, so the wide is 20. Everything that was said to council was indicating that the light was going to the Norwood House apartment. Nobody else was gonna be affected. And then if you look at our border, okay, because then council did come with the order. Now, I am going to take the hit, because I'm gonna say to council, we did not do our due diligence. We were, we were very ignorant in this whole thing. And I wish we had, I wish we could go back, because we would do it so differently. Because we didn't, we came in as, not as educated as we should. So I apologize so much to the residents for that. But I'm, you're not getting off the hook, as far as your responsibility. Okay, so the order said, the applicants granted the conditional use to construct the sign pursuant to the testimony and exhibits presented during the hearing. The approval and permitted use shall be in substantial conformity with the exhibits and the testimony and exhibits presented at the hearing. Okay, I just listened to the testimony. You just, the order that you have, your permit is based on the testimony. I don't understand the problem, and this is why I want you two here, and I want you to hear this. I do not understand. Could you please explain to council, why there's been no citation? Why that sign hasn't been shut down, that one side, until this is resolved?
Tom, I have a section of notes that that's from...
This is the transcript.
Other transcripts?
These are the transcripts.
Oh, I just want to make, I think, in response to your question, Mr. President, and your questions as well, I want to make three points. The area where the sign is located is part of Borough's industrial zoning district. So billboard signs, the size and height of the sign that was constructed are permitted use by conditional use in that zoning district. So Borough, through its legislation over the years, had made a determination, not necessarily this Borough Council, but previous Borough Councils, that that was the location where these types of uses are permitted. Second, Borough, just like every other municipality in the Commonwealth, has to permit billboards as a use somewhere in the Borough. So it could have been on Route 30, in the center of the business district, it could have been another place, but that was the legislatively decided decision to put it there. So the Borough was faced with a decision where you couldn't necessarily stop the sign.
What do you mean?
The sign was permitted by what's called a conditional use process, meaning that there was a hearing in December. The hearing was held upon the application of the applicants. Testimony was presented, notice was given, certain issues were raised. Borough Council was, based this decision on the testimony that was presented, and issued a decision permitting the sign. It is the state-of-the-art type of sign, and Borough Council relied on the testimony. Third thing is Borough staff, Borough engineer, taking as close a look as possible at that...
possible at that decision and has made a determination that the sign as it stands today is in compliance with that decision. Now, the issue that the applicant Catalyst is here today to address are issues that the Borough has, Borough staff has asked them to address in order to try to mitigate issues. The applicant's not going to put a sign up that can't be seen by anybody. Uses in an industrial zoning district are necessarily going to have an impact on other properties. Every land use has an impact on other properties. So at this point, Borough engineer, Borough staff, and will continue to take as close a possible look at the decision and the testimony and the actual sign as it stands today and the impact it has on the neighbors to determine what the best decision is to mitigate that any impacts that that sign has. We've heard their impacts here tonight. Obviously, people are providing their input to Borough Council. But staff has been responsive and that's why Catalyst is here.
So we're trying to do our best for listening.